Also be aware that the recording will also be published later. So that should set the standard for this meeting. Welcome to this meeting of the Standards Committee. Present I've got as presenters and helping us in this meeting. I've got Alec Dubley of Democratic Services, Caroline McCleary, who we're hearing from a minute ago, who's going to assist to this. And a new face for this particular committee, Fran Wiley, who is now the Monitoring Officer amongst lots of other titles that she seems to have acquired since Helen went. I want to pay tribute, however, before I formally go on to this meeting, to Helen Barrington, who was our Monitoring Officer for many years and did a sterling work. I'm absolutely confident that Fran's going to be in her way, just as helpful to this committee. But Helen did go on to other things in Derbyshire, which we wished her well and we wished her well at full council. But from this committee, I want to put on record my thanks for all the work that she did and the help that she gave me in terms of chairing the Standards Meeting. So in attendance, apart from myself, Michael Boyle, I'm the Chair of Standards and I represent Plains Ward. We've got Andrew Elwood, councillor Andrew Elwood, councillor Clive Towsey Hinton, councillor Michael Payne, who is also Vice Chair of this committee. And I'm not reading this in no particular order, but very welcome to John Bagley, our independent person who attends, councillor Martin Smith, councillor Mike Hope, councillor Pat Bosworth, Pat Woodfield is also on here. Rosalie Hawkes, who's a Deputy Independent Person, as I understand it, councillor Simon Murray and Susan Dewey is also here. So anyone else I have missed out, Caroline?
No, if I may, Susan Dewey is the Deputy or Independent Person.
Oh, sorry, I've got that wrong.
That's okay.
I beg your pardon. So that's the names, everybody. As I say, I took over the chair when I was first elected as a councillor. And just for Fran's benefit, I'm just going to give them a minute or so to each of you to just introduce themselves for her benefit. Some of whom she will know you, but some of the people she won't have met. So for her benefit, I wonder if we could just go round the virtual room. Who wants to start? Perhaps we'll start with you, Alex.
Alec. Sorry, I'm Alec, Democratic Services Manager.
She knows you quite well, I would imagine. Caroline.
Hello, I'm Caroline McCleary, minute taker for this meeting and Democratic Service Officer, just supporting in the background. Thank you.
Now, if we go round the room in terms of councillors, then please, I'll start with you, Andrew, and then you decide the order that you want to after that.
Okay, everyone, my name is councillor Andrew Elwood. That's it.
Thank you.
Councillor Clive Towsey Hinton, I represent Phoenix Ward.
Hello, councillor Martin Smith, I represent Newstead Abbey Ward.
Yeah, I'm councillor Mike Hope and I represent Calvert-on-Wall.
And councillor Pat Bosworth and I represent Calvert-on-Wall.
And I represent Simon Murray. And I represent Newstead Abbey Ward with councillor Smith.
Hi, everybody. Councillor Michael Payne, I represent Red Hill Ward, Deputy Leader of the Council and Vice Chair of this committee to councillor Boyle, who obviously chairs the committee.
Hello, I'm Pat Woodfield. I am the parish councillor from Woodborough Ward and I'm also the Chair of that parish council.
Thank you.
I think there may possibly be me now. I'm Rosalie Hawkes. I'm the co-opted, non-voting member representing the Gedlin community.
Okay, anyone else? Yeah, just you, Susan.
You don't need to, yes. So I'm the Deputy Independent Person, as was pointed out earlier. And so I'm a Gedlin resident and a freelance project manager. And I came to this about three years ago, I think now. I can't remember when we last had a meeting. It's all gone into a bit of a blur this year, but anyway, hello.
We've lost it, yeah. I'm John Bagley, I'm the Independent Person. I've worked on standards and chaired the committee from 2007 to about 2012. I've been the Independent Person since 2012.
Thank you. Fran, I don't think you should be left out.
Thank you. I'm Fran Wiley or Francesca Wiley. I am the Monitoring Officer now for Gedlin Borough Council and the Head of Governance and Customer Services. And I moved into that role at the beginning of January. So this is my first Standards Committee as your Monitoring Officer. Thank you for introducing yourselves. Many of you I know and have worked with for some time, others. It's nice to put faces to names, so nice to meet you all.
Thank you and welcome to this committee. We try to keep it as lighthearted and as informal as possible. So we'll see how we get on. So the next item on the agenda that I have is to approve as a correct record the minutes from the 27th of August. It does seem quite a long time ago, quite a lot's happened since, some of which we'll go into, no doubt. But first of all, are there any points of accuracy that anybody wants to raise? I'll take silence as a no. So they need to be moved as a correct record. Do I have somebody who can formally move that for me? Who was there, preferably?
I'll move it.
Thank you. Who was that? I couldn't see.
It was me, Mike.
Oh, Mike Hope, yes. So Mike Hope has moved them. Any objections? Otherwise, we will take them as read that the minutes are approved.
Do we have a second chair? Sorry.
I'm happy to second them, Fran.
They've been proposed and seconded. Those, we take it as read that they are approved? Thank you, they're approved for the record. Thank you very much. The next item to move on to is declarations of interests. Just as, just before the meeting, councillor Pat Bosworth did say that should there be any questions on the Code of Conduct complaint update, there is one item to which she will absent herself from a discussion if we move into closed session. So I'll just point that out, that she did inform me by telephone the other day on that and I thank her for doing so. But other than that, I've received none. Have you received any, Fran?
No, Chair, I haven't received any notification of any declarations of interest.
And no one wants to bring any to this meeting? Other than what I've said?
Yes, please, yeah.
Go ahead.
I don't think it's either a pecuniary or a private interest, but I feel the need to declare it for the public record. Item four on our agenda is an update on the Local Government Association Model Code of Conduct for councillors. I am a Director of the Local Government Association and a Deputy Chair of the Local Government Association and was quite heavily involved in working with LGA officers around the working up of the Model Code of Conduct. I have referenced that before on the record in meetings, but I just feel the need to put it on the record again for this meeting, given that we are discussing that item. But I think the Monitoring Officer will advise me that's neither a pecuniary or private interest, but I'm declaring it for transparency purposes.
Thank you, councillor Payne. It was noted last time when you did much the same thing and thank you for that. Just for the record, it makes it a lot easier. But yeah, noted, thank you. Okay, so that's the declarations of interest. So we do come on to item four of the Local Government Association Model Code of Conduct. If you remember from the August meeting and we had an update from the working group that then went through what was then under consultation on the Model Code. There was quite a lot of debate in the working group about that and indeed at the committee as to the strength of that proposed model code. We proposed and made some submissions to that, to which I'm sure some members may wish to refer. I don't particularly propose to go through each bit line by line because I don't think that's really what the recommendation is. The recommendation is that we actually note the progress that has been made and that we reconstitute the working or carry on the work of the working group so that we can then look at the Model Code, which came out in December and to which has been referred and that has made some changes. In particular, it did make some changes to the requirement to be civil. We don't have to be civil. We have to treat people instead with respect. So that's one major change, but there are other changes, of course. And the recommendation is about us redoing the working group. So there's two things. Do we want to do that? Does anybody who's not on the working group at the moment wish to join? And I think that's perfectly legitimate, should they wish to do so. And then we can note and we can have a discussion. But I don't know, Fran, you want to introduce that section? I know it causes you a little bit of issue because obviously it was worked by your predecessor. But nevertheless, that's where we are. I don't know if you want to say anything about it, Fran.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I hope members have obviously seen the content of the report. The first version of the approved code was released on the 3rd of December and then a slightly tweaked version, which is appended to this report, was released on the 23rd of December. I won't, as councillor Boyle has alluded, we don't propose at this meeting to go through line by line the published code and compare it to our own current code. That is something that I've proposed should be taken forward through a working group, whether it is the same working group that was established that dealt with the report from the Committee on Standards of Public Life or whether there are further volunteers. As part of the recommendations of that report from the Committee on Standards of Public Life, there was a recommendation that councils should review their codes annually. There hasn't been a review of the Gedlin Borough Council Code of Conduct in 2020, largely because we were awaiting the publication of the Model Code and also with Covid, which seems to have put a spanner in the works somewhat. The detail on the code is attached to the report. I've also included information in the report as to generally what we know so far in terms of uptake, so how many authorities are adopting the code or are looking to adopt the code. And that information has come from a consultation that has been run by lawyers in local government amongst monitoring officers to see what the general approach is to the Model Code. Now, obviously, it was the intention of the code through the committee report that there was some kind of unity and one set of standards throughout the country, which is a principle, a very sound idea. It's helpful that we're all working to the same set of standards. Unfortunately, there hasn't been the unity perhaps hoped amongst authorities to what has ultimately been produced. The one-size-fits-all approach doesn't seem to have gone down particularly well. Obviously, people are used to their own codes. Some people adopted the old draft code that came out following the Localism Act. Some people's codes are obviously much more detailed. Ours does provide more detail than perhaps is published in the Model Code. But there are elements of the Model Code which we may feel we want to incorporate into our code or we may feel a slightly slimmed-down version is preferable. But I think it's important that members have a detailed look at that through the working group in consultation with myself. And then, following that, I would propose, again, one of the recommendations that comes out of the CPSL report is that we engage with the public and stakeholders in relation to reviews and changes to our Code of Conduct. So again, following the work in the working group, it may be the next committee we look at perhaps going out to consultation on some of those proposals, just so we can get a full engagement in relation to that. As I say, you can see from the report the take-up so far from this consultation done by lawyers in local government. Only 20% of those responding indicated that they would be adopting the Model Code as it stands. As I've detailed, this is not a legislative requirement to adopt that code at the moment, nor does there seem to be any move towards that for the time being. But it may in the future become the case that they do prescribe the code through statute. But unless anyone's got any particular questions on it, as I say, I don't propose to go through it line by line. I think there is some work to be done around that. But it's published now, it's there, we can see what we've got to work with. And as I say, I think there are some positive elements of it that we might want to consider and also some gaps where perhaps our code is maybe a little bit more robust. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. It's a good summary of where we've come from and where we are in terms of a model code. I'll throw it up for questions now. I can see that councillor Martin Smith is indicating. And then I've got Susan Dewey after Martin. So perhaps we will take, and then I've got Mike Hope after that. So if you're happy, Fran, I will take free contributions and then perhaps a response from you and then the next free, perhaps. I'll do it in that way, if that's all right with you.
Yep.
So Martin Smith first.
Yeah, thanks for that, Fran. Obviously, looking at the figures, there's a certain amount of apathy across numerous councils. Do you have any understanding of why? What is it that they're objecting to? What are they not happy with?
I don't know, not from that particular consultation. And this was actually raised with LLG to say it's helpful to have those statistics in terms of who's adopting, but we would like a little more detail as to why, you know, why those different approaches are being taken. So they are looking to do some further work from that. I have been a number of sort of workshop sessions myself in relation to the code and webinars and so forth. And generally, and this is very much just a vibe from those meetings rather than any sort of firm evidential base, it's been a feeling that they're quite happy with what they've got or they feel that what they currently have is perhaps more detailed and maybe an element of reluctance to change that. So they've got the code that they're used to. Most people adopted new codes back in 2000, well, all people adopted new codes back in 2012 after the Localism Act. And it's kind of a keep keeping with those original codes. But as I say, that's more sort of anecdotal from what I've gleaned from those meetings. But if there is any further update from the further work LLG are doing about specific reasons, then I will feed that back to committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Dewey, you're next.
Hang on a minute, I'm mute.
You are on mute at the moment.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I was going to ask a similar question, really, in terms of the take-up and what the thoughts were behind that. But a supplementary really, and again, it's probably quite hard for you to answer this, Francesca, but it doesn't sound like there's an appetite nationally to try and sort of firm up some of these codes of conduct and get a one-size-fits-all. Again, it's speculation, but it just seems, especially with some of all joking apart with the Jackie Weaver thing, stuff like that is highlighted where some of the challenges are for local government. Do we think that perhaps there ought to be more of a drive from the coalface to try and push for some more stringent codes of conduct? I don't know what people's thoughts are. I mean, I banged on about this in every meeting. I just find some of the behaviours abhorrent and, you know, we should be firming up some of it. That's my personal view. What are your thoughts?
If I may come back, Chair, I think one of the issues you're raising as well there is sanctions, which is still an area which is perhaps considered by some to be quite weak in terms of dealing with Code of Conduct complaints. Again, I suppose this is more of a personal view and again, sort of anecdotal from discussions with colleagues. I think there's definitely an appetite to have a one standard because it would provide much more clarity in terms, particularly in terms of investigations and so forth, if we were all singing from the same hymn sheet. It's just apparently can't seem to get to a point where, you know, everybody is happy with the final product. And I think until it is a prescribed code through legislation, we may struggle to get to that point. But I do think there is an appetite for it, but it's just the detail which is causing the difficulties.
Thank you. Susan, is that all right? Did you want to come back on that at all? If not, I'll move on to councillor Mike Hope, who is next.
Well, thank you very much, Chair. Can I just say that I think the way forward is to, as you say, have some comparison with our existing code compared against this and decide what we want in, what we want out, how we want to change it. But I think one of the reasons there may be a poor take-up is the style. And I've got to say, I quite like it because it's very personalised. You know, I do not bully any person. It isn't saying a councillor won't or shouldn't. It's saying I won't. So it's a very different style and anybody adopting this would actually probably have to change the whole. They couldn't adopt a bit of it without either changing the bit that they adopt or changing the rest of their existing Code of Conduct, simply because of the style. And it's a style I quite like, actually. I think it puts it in the right place. Can I just say, I would like to, once again, be on the group that we set up to do that comparison and get this in place. I also agree, having listened to what's gone before, that really we should be saying, well, it's all very well having standards, but you can't have standards in a vacuum. So there does have to be some sanctions. And at the moment, there aren't any or there doesn't seem to be. And that, to me, seems to be something of a problem. There has to be the plottability of meaningful sanctions when the code is broken. Otherwise, basically, there's no penalty. They're my two observations. But I would like to, as you say, put a grid together, compare what we've got with what's here, decide what we want to keep, if we want to change anything. But I would very much support the style.
Thank you, councillor Hope. I think that was a very useful introduction, just from my tutny worth. If people don't mind, and I will open it up again for other contributions, if people want it. For me, I think the aim I would see of us doing is to do the comparison and the analysis work that councillor Hope has mentioned, look at what's best in our own code, have, look at any new ideas that might come out of the Model Code and then take the best of both perhaps forward and analyse it in that way perhaps as a way. I think there are, I think I agree that the style is both a benefit and a problem. It's a problem in the sense that existing codes might talk in a different way and that somehow has got to be reconciled. But, and I think, but I think the direct style as what it has within the proposed Model Code is quite approachable and understandable for laypeople, which I think most councillors would be, and I think that's very good. What I would also say, though, is that in terms of take-up, well, there's no compunction, it seems to me, for there to be a take-up. So and there are other things that local authorities and local authority members are doing. And then there's the sanctions issue, which will require a sort of a change in legislation. Of course, there's no bandwidth in the relevant departments in government for that either. So I think we are where we are, we do the best we can. And it will be an evolving picture. What I do like about how we do things here in Gedlin is that we will be reviewing in the light of experience every so often so that we keep up to date with the pressures and experiences that members and interested parties would have. So that would be my contribution. I see, Mike, you've got your hand up again.
So, yeah, I do apologise. I did mean to say, it went past me. I don't know where we would do it, but you're talking about councils adopting it in total or part or whatever and whether the government's going to impose a Code of Conduct. It seems to me that we ought to contact whoever it is and suggest that actually there ought to be a minimum Code of Conduct. In other words, these things should appear in every Code of Conduct. You know, the basic minimum that governs the behaviour of councillors. And then if councils want to add more, they can, but they can't have less. That somewhere there should be a minimum standard that all councils agree to, well, have to agree to. That's all from my view. Thank you.
Yeah, no, no, fine. And that's probably what I was alluding to, is at least somewhere to start from if you've got nothing that you can improve on. That's really also where I was coming from. Other contributions? No, Fran, did you want to come back on anything that you thought? Oh, sorry, Rosalie Hawkes has got her hand up now.
Yes, sorry, a last minute, just to volunteer my services again, if that's appropriate to any working party. I was involved in the last round. And I think just quickly to pick up on something that Susan mentioned earlier, a subject that has come up on a number of previous meetings about conduct and the occasions when the code doesn't actually apply to the conduct that's been complained of. So it was just to note at appendix C to the model that those recommendations about clarifying in law whether the code, to what extent the Code of Conduct applies to behaviour that perhaps where currently it's called outside acting as a councillor or being seen to act as a councillor, that appears still under review. So until that's addressed, whatever code we have remains of limited scope. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may come back on a couple of points, Chair. The LGA did indicate that there was going to be some further guidance. I've not seen anything else as yet. So I will obviously update if anything further comes out in relation to the Model Code. And just referring back to councillor Hope's comments, obviously, the basics that are included in the Localism Act in terms of what a code should include. I know when the Localism Act came in and there was a draft LGA code, that was stripped right back. So that very much had the basics and what the legislation required. But I agree, I think there's probably more that should be included as part of the code. And I think this Model Code goes much further and does include a lot more. Certainly, there is some reference to interests that aren't just disclosable pecuniary interests, which is what the old draft code they had just limited it to DPIs. I think that's helpful. You'll notice that they're limited again to sort of financial interests rather than any other type of non-DPI. So, yeah, it does go further than historically, but, you know, but I do agree with you in terms of, there still doesn't seem to be that basic sort of standard above the legislation that everybody is sort of following. Thank you.
Thank you. So are there any other contributions, questions or comments that attendees or members wish to put on at this time? I can't see anyone at the moment.
Well, I'm trying to show a hand.
Okay, well, you've done that orally instead, so yes, let's hear from you.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I was going to refer to the fact that, yes, there are supposed to be... to be some more guidelines coming along sort of May, April time. But I was going to particularly pick up on councillor Hope's comments. As you know, might expect from me that I, I altogether disagree with using the first person and, and I'm not in agreement with that. But the other thing is the, is the, the sanctions, which unfortunately I'm dealing with stuff elsewhere that really highlights the lack of being able to bring any sort of significant sanctions to bear. Even in fact, the sanction, if, if, you know, I see no real, real effort in this, in the, or point in the current sanctions that says that a councillor who refuses to comply at all with the process is under any sort of guilt at all unless we make up our own rules and decide to just publish that anyway. So we do need, as I say, the, the, the current thing we're dealing with under the old regime, pre 2012, would have almost certainly resulted in a complete suspension of, 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 of membership. Yeah.
Thank you, John.
So I find we are very, very powerless at the moment.
I would agree. Okay. If there are no other contributions, and if there are, please show or shout if I haven't seen you. Otherwise, I'm going to put the recommendations, which are on page seven of your document pack, that we note the content of the report and agree that the LGA model code of conduct be considered by the monitoring officer and working group, as presently constituted, of course, plus the, plus anyone else. And we did have a volunteer tonight with a view to recommendations being brought back before this committee, as detailed in the report. And of course, includes if we decide to put things out for consultation and so on, as Fran has said. Can I see that being proposed by somebody? Please, who's a member?
I'm happy to propose it.
I'm happy to propose.
Second.
I'm happy to second.
Michael Payne and Simon Murray propose on second, whichever way you want to record it in a minute. So I really don't, don't mind. But I think on this occasion, I would like to see a show of hands to indicate for, against or abstention, just so that we have that as a record. So can I see all those in favour, please? Yeah, if you use your raised hands, it's probably easier for minute takers to, 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 to put that in. So the voting members, I think, have all done so. Any against? I don't think there can be any against. I think we have everybody. So I'm taking against now. So councillor Payne, you've got your, is that a vote against, Pat Woodfield?
No.
No. Right. So we had those. Any, any abstentions, please show now. And I think there will be because we've got everybody accounted for. So that is, that is overwhelmingly carried. Thank you very much. And thanks for the discussion as well. That was very, very useful. As a follow up, I guess Fran and I will just, will, will discuss when to start constituting a working group again. Have you got a list of names? You've got a list of names, haven't you?
Yes, I have a list, yeah.
Okay. Obviously, if there's anybody else, and I think a list of names is, is mentioned in the report, I can't remember which page now, but it's there. So if you do want to, to join in, you're more than welcome. Just let Fran or me know about that and we'll, we'll get that organised. I would suggest that we, we start working in a few weeks' time perhaps. But we can exchange emails on that, can't we? All right. Thanks very much. So I'm now going to move on to item five, which is the Code of Conduct Complaints Update, which is a report of a monitoring officer. I will, at this point, ask whether there's likely to be detailed questions on any item contained therein. If there is likely to be, please let me know and then we'll go into closed session. Otherwise, I'll hear from Fran Wiley on, on the code of conduct update more generally. So anybody likely to want to ask any questions on any detail of, of what's on, on your pack from page 29 onwards?
Chair, can I suggest that we hear from the monitoring officer first and then make a judgement about whether there, there's going to be any wider discussion once we've heard from the, the monitoring officer?
Fine, yeah, we'll do that.
Fran's report is probably best heard in open session, isn't it?
Yep. Yeah, let's do that.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And thank you, councillor Payne. Yes, certainly in terms of a general update, the report is in the public domain. So just to, just to briefly go through that, obviously, the last update to members was back in August 2020. That was the last Standards Committee. At that committee, I think members agreed that the, the list of, the list of complaints that was being brought before committee was quite lengthy because it went right back, I think, to the start of the, of the, of the new regime. So on that basis, the, the appendix A before you is just details complaints since financial year 1920. So it's just going back the last two years, just for ease of reference. Just in, in terms of an update on numbers of complaints. So since the 14th of August 2020 meeting, there has been six new code of conduct complaints that have come into the council. You may recall at the last meeting, there were four standards complaints outstanding. Three of those were subsequently treated as withdrawn and, and the fourth one is, is detailed in appendix two. Of the six new code of conduct complaints that came in since the 14th of August 2020 meeting, one has since been treated as withdrawn. And at the time of drafting the report and indeed this meeting, five of those complaints are outstanding. And I can just say in sort of general, very general terms, in terms of an update on those complaints, two of those have, further information is being sought from the complainant. One of them had been put on hold but has now been reinstigated. And two of them are currently being looked at by myself in conjunction with the independent person. And, and hopefully will be concluded and be reported back to you on the, at the next meeting of the Standards Committee.
Thank you, Fran. So I'll take general questions. Obviously, no particulars at this stage because we're still in open session. So Susan Dewey.
Yeah, just, I, I haven't seen anything recently. I normally get a pack of, of, sent to me as the independent person on these. So as I say, I'm not going to ask her generally, but I'm a bit curious. I don't know if it's a typo. Maybe I've missed something obvious, but there appears to be one about St Albans. Is that, is that, is that a typo? Or am I not allowed to ask that question in this? Sorry. It's just that in my notes, that one of them, it says St Albans Parish Council.
That's, that's, that's correct. That's correct. Susan, we, Bestwood St Albans Parish Council.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
It was split into two a few years ago. So you've got the Bestwood Village part of, of Bestwood St Albans, which has its own parish. And, and what you would probably know, Susan, is, is the Warren Hill area, as you go out towards Rice Park. It's that area there. So around about Bestwood.
Right. I understand that. Yes. Because there's a pub up there called Duke of St Albans, isn't there? I've got it now. I'm thinking. It's all about that. Thank you very much, guys. Thank you. Sorry about that.
No, that's fine.
Some, some of us have already been there and got the medal.
Any other general comments or questions first? Okay. Thank you very much. Martin Smith, councillor Martin Smith.
Yes. And I, I think without stating the obvious, Calvert-on-Paris Council, of course, is, is listed on, on numerous occasions, unfortunately. Whilst I don't want to sort preempt any investigations, do we, do we believe though that Calvert-on-Paris Council needs some guidance, some support and some training?
Again, without going, without going into any detail, until I think the, the, the sort of content and full assessment of those complaints has been dealt with, then what comes out of that may, you know, they may be issues that are identified. But at this stage, it, you know, we have to work through the complaints and, and see what the best outcomes are.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Rosalie Hawks.
Thank you, Chair. I don't think it's specifically referred to in, in the background, but could I refer back to items on page 36? Various codes, but including STD 001778, and there's a few more afterwards, which was the decision that was not acting in official capacity referred to group leaders to deal with. And I seem to recall that that was the subject of some discussion at, at a previous meeting. And if it's appropriate to ask the question in open session, has that now been dealt with? And has a, has an update been given to the monitoring officer, please?
My view, my view is that maybe it isn't. And we, it's quite a legitimate question, but perhaps we have to go into closed session to, to discuss that, I would, I would say. I don't know what your view.
I, I think, I think, I think as a, as a general point that I can probably say in open session, I did note that this was something that was brought, mentioned in the, in the previous minutes. I do have to say at the moment, I don't have any update on that to give members. But I did note it from the last meeting and it is something that I am going to, going to take up.
Councillor Payne.
I thank Rosalie for a question. And I think the monitoring officer is right. I mean, the simple fact is, is that this document sits in the public domain and is accessible to the public. And I just want to put on my record as a Standards Committee member, because I did raise this last time. And I think this follows on from the very sensible point Susan Dewey made earlier, that we are some considerable months on from that point now. And the fact that there has not been an update provided by the group leader to the monitoring officer, either your predecessor or you, Fran, I think is hugely disappointing. And I think it means we're falling short of, of upholding decent standards, you know, within the council, that the group leader was asked to take action. It was referenced to the group leader. And I would have thought it was a courtesy that the monitor officer had been updated on, on what the appropriate action was that had been, had been taken. And I think it is important we ask these questions in the public domain because, as Susan said earlier, quite rightly, we should be beyond reproach. And we should, and it's our job as a committee to uphold these standards. So, you know, I welcome the question that Rosalie's asked. And I, I would stress, and I hope colleagues would support me in this, Fran, that in the strongest terms possible, you encourage the group leader to take swift action and to report back to, to you. Because otherwise, it just makes a mockery of, of, of this committee and of, and of upholding decent standards on behalf of the public and ultimately the taxpayer who pay for, for these local services.
Yeah. Thank you, councillor Payne. I certainly will take it up. As I say, it certainly, nothing has come to me, but I will make further inquiries. And I apologise that there isn't an update to give today.
Right. So that's an action that's from this committee to again, contact the, the relevant group leader for, for that update.
Yeah, I think, Chair, John, John Bagley wanted to say something, I think. He had his hand up.
Could you, yeah, I, I wondered if he could repeat the, the actual reference number?
It is STD 001778, if I'm not mistaken.
001778, okay.
It's on page 36 of your pack.
Oh, yeah. 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 Right. Okay.
So that, that's an action I don't, yeah, I think that's a reasonable thing to ask, of course, for an update. It was asked for last time, as I remember from, from the meeting. I don't want to go into the detail, obviously, in open session. But, but yes, it's perfectly reasonable that we, we asked for that. And perhaps if there is a, an update forthcoming, that that is sent to members of this committee and attendees before the next standards meeting, which is obviously some weeks away after, after this one.
Yes, Chair. I'll, I'll make sure it's circulated.
Thank you. Anyone else? General things still at the moment? Okay. Doesn't appear to be any, if they're asked, is there likely to be any specific questions that requires closed session?
Chair, I think in light of the question that Martin Smith, councillor Smith, asked earlier, which I think was an apposite question, given some of the pattern that appears in the appendices, I think it would be helpful to have a, a closed session, further discussion and just probe some further questions around some of the issues that, that may be, maybe in that wider context around the question that councillor Smith asked if, if colleagues are in agreement.
Fine. I, I have no problem. We need the form of words, which I can never remember. So I don't know.
I can, I can read the words out.
Sorry, so, so, Jim, can I just just, I, I can see where councillor Payne's going with that. But it might make sense to defer that discussion until we have the report from the next Standards Committee meeting, given what Francesca told us about the incomplete nature of those investigations.
Councillor Murray, we've, I understand what you're saying, but it's been a move to go into closed session from councillor Payne. So.
If I may as well, if I may as well.
So that's what's before us now, rather than whether, whether something's a bit, if that was opposing going into closed session, I understand it. But I'm not sure if that's what you were saying.
Chair, if I may as well, I, I actually have a few questions about some of the other issues on that table that aren't in relation to Calvert-on-Parish Council. And I don't want to ask those questions in the public domain.
Very well. In that event, I withdraw my, my opposition to councillor Payne's motion.
Okay. Thank you. So councillor Payne wants to go into closed session. Can we have the form of words, please? And then I'll take councillor Payne as the proposer and then we'll need a second for that.
Yes, Chair. So the wording is that members being satisfied that the public interest in maintaining the exemption outweighs the public interest in disclosing the information. This under section 100A, subsection four of the Local Government Act 1972, the public and press be excluded from the meeting during the consideration of the ensuing report on the grounds that the confidential appendix and other questions arising from the first appendix would involve the likely disclosure of exempt information as defined in paragraphs one and two of part one of schedule 12A of the Local Government Act 1972.
Word perfect. Thank you. So I need a formal second for, for that.
I'll second that.
Thank you, councillor Hope. So that's seconded. I'm going to move straight to, straight to a vote on, on this. So those in favour, please show. Okay. Still those in favour? Thank you. Can I now see any against? None against. As I can see, any abstentions? No. Right. We are moving into closed session, in which case. The live streaming and the, and those things. Thank you. So we are live streaming again. We are all casting. Please keep your, your video on for the purposes of, of the recording and the live streaming. Thank you. John Bagley, you've got your hand up.
Yes, I, I wanted to sort of make a, a personal statement. This, I mean, you've all probably got fed up of the old record of mine saying how much I respected and valued the collegiship with Helen over the years. And I think it was very much down to Helen that we had such a, that we have a code of practice which perhaps may not be Rolls Royce, but it, but it, but it's certainly Bentley. And, you know, and that's why I, my view is very much that we want to keep to the basics of, of, of that. But to go back, you know, I've. But to go back, you know, I've, yes, I've worked for ever since sort of about 2008, I think it was with Helen, while I was Chair of the Standards Committee until the Localism Act came in and then became independent person, which actually meant that we had to work very much more closely together, and particularly with the very difficult Bestwood issues in those early days. And as I say, I think the standard which we which we've achieved over the years at Gedling and by and large, the excellent can I put it as simply as behaviour of councillors in general, particularly at the Borough Council level, is is down to the work that Helen has put in. And I cannot pay tribute to her enough. But going on from there, I would wish to pay tribute to two people who unfortunately are no longer with us, but played a very significant part in under the old regime, but in our investigations and working parties to produce the current code. And that was John Boot, who died last September. And I think those of you who've been involved with the Borough Council for many years will will know and have had many fond memories of John Boot. And I would like to pay tribute to him and what a lovable character he was. But less known to you all, but also probably known to councillor Woodfield, would be Geoff Parkinson, who while John was the quiet expert giving us hints and nudges in the background, Geoff was never afraid to come forward, but nearly always with great advice. And when we go back to, if we can make on a joke, jokey basis, really, that aligning with the appendix two that we haven't actually dealt with the latter part, was the only time that, in this wizard joke, that Helen ever let me down, was when she went on holiday and John Boot, Geoff Parkinson, and one of the other legal eagles on the Standards Committee in those days, then quizzed me why Helen and I had breached a particular decision. And they gave me a jolly hot time, I can tell you. So I would like to pay tribute to all those people. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you, John Bagley. That's very helpful. And it echoes what I was saying about Helen at the beginning of this meeting and how helpful she has been. And we've got a very worthy replacement in in terms of Fran going forward. So thank you for that. We are on any other business formally now, I think. So I haven't been notified of anything that's particularly urgent. But if there is anything other that anybody wants to raise, then please do so now. John, again.
Sorry, another thing that actually involves me personally, having this lost year of 2020, we and with the CSPL thing in the background and recommendations and best practice and periods of office, I'm not quite sure when my period of office now ends. And so I hate to add to Fran's workload, but at some stage, and perhaps I ought to have it in my record somewhere, but I'm not quite sure when my period of office actually ends.
Well, I know for members of the committee, there was no changes because we haven't had an annual general meeting. So everybody who's here would have been subject to the annual general meeting in 2020, which didn't take place, but will take place in 2021, as I understand it. So that's for city members here. As far as the independent people are concerned, I would hope you continue, but I'm not, it's not up to me. I'm sure Fran might wish to comment on that particular question.
Yeah. Sorry, yeah, certainly, it's something that I will need to discuss with you, Chair, and with John. Going forward, looking at that, I haven't got that detail for you tonight, but I will have a look at that, John, and Will.
Forgotten all about.
Fine. Any other, any other matters? Rosalie Hawkes.
Just a procedural matter. I'm not sure that you actually voted on the recommendation for agenda item five because we went into closed session before you did that. I may be wrongly. So apologies if I missed that bit from from earlier in the meeting.
To come into it. And then I said if there wasn't any other points, we were coming out of it, and nobody objected. So that's how we we did it. I'm not sure if that was the right thing to do, but it seemed expedient at the time.
If I may, Chair, yeah, I think I think I think you're quite right. I don't think there was a vote taken on the on the on the report itself. I think the recommendation was to note. So there was no formal vote taken on the noting of that of that report, just on the move into closed session. So you could take a vote on that now, Chair. Now we're all back in session. But it was just to note.
Formally to note item five, and apologies, perhaps I should have taken, I was taken as read, so. A mover and seconded, please, and then we'll Thank you, councillor Hope.
I'll second.
Thank you, councillor Tausie Hinton. So all those in favour of noting that report? Thank you. Any against? Rosalie, was that a vote against?
No, I don't think I put my hand up, and I've got no voting rights either.
No, no, but your hand is up, that's what I'm saying.
It's not showing on my screen. I apologize. Let me just right, I've lowered my hand. I'm sorry about that, everybody.
Your hand was up.
It wasn't, yeah. Showing on my screen. Apologies.
No votes against. Therefore, we have formally noted that report for purposes of this meeting. Sorry for the confusion that I obviously caused. Fine, back to any other business. Mine, there is none other than that. And thank you very much for everybody's contribution and attendance and patience on some items as well. So thank you very much, and we'll see you all next time, which will be, for some of you at least, the working group, which will be regurgitated.